To the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next regularly scheduled meeting is Friday, November 15th, 2019 at 9:00 a.m. at the Community Center, 3500 Edgewater Drive, Sebring, Florida, 33872. Please silence or turn off your cell phones. Consent agenda minutes of the Board of Supervisors regular meeting held Friday, October 11th, 2019.
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any board discussion? Any public comment? Chrissy?
Supervisor Stiegel?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hotelling?
Yes.
President Branson?
Yes. Billy Casper Golf is on the way. We'll go ahead and start on the action again and we'll interrupt when they get here. I am a public hearing resolution number 2019-10/25-41. A resolution to Son and Lake of Sebring Improvement District to adopt the advertising rates.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Board discussion? Public comment? Chrissy?
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and take the role. Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hotelling?
Yes.
Supervisor Stiegel?
Yes.
President Branson?
Yes. Item B, resolution number 2019-10/25-42. A resolution to Son and Lake of Sebring Improvement District to award the Matanzas Lift Station project designated as RFP 19-07. And then we have blacks, Tanya.
Mr. Jim Orth with Craig A. Smith and Associates should be here within five or 10 minutes. And...
You need a motion to approve?
Need a motion to approve, yes sir.
I do.
All right, you're gonna make a motion to approve and you don't know who and why much.
Well, we have to approve before we can...
Before we talk.
Make a motion before we can discuss it.
Second motion.
Okay. All right, any board discussion?
Can I make a motion to just table it until he gets here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I make that motion.
Second.
Should we vote on the motion table?
I think we have to vote on that motion.
Yeah, Chrissy.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hotelling?
Yes.
Supervisor Stiegel?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson? I mean, President Branson?
Yes. All right, we'll go back to item five. Billy Casper Golf.
Good morning. I'm gonna go first and just rip off a couple things that we're doing out on the golf course and then I'll turn it over to these two gentlemen. Just some updates. As you've been out on the golf courses and seen, we are working currently on refreshing Pine Straw and Coquina areas as well as creating a few new areas out there just to help with some cart traffic. The range map, we are pretty much complete on. There will be a few tweaks here and there as far as walk-ups to the tee once we open it and kind of see where everybody likes to travel to. But we're, our plan right now is to open that on Monday for two to three days, try it out, kind of see where we're at, and then we'll go back to the turf for another week. And then we'll get that in a regular rotation as we get to season. As we discussed before, our main focus of that is to try to better manage these shotguns, daily shotguns, especially our outside play. So as much as we can, we'll keep members on turf, but that'll be a great tool for us moving into season with heavy traffic to be able to move stuff around. So that will start on Monday and we'll, we'll kind of tweak it as we go. We do have some dividers that are coming. They've been ordered, but they're not here. So as, as we get further along into that, the stations will be a little more identified. It'll be a little smoother operation, but right now, we're gonna go ahead with it.
Row, one, one comment. We were just out of town and they had one similar to that. It works really nicely. However, you can't, or at least on that one, you can't use the tall tees because they won't go far enough down into there. So if we're gonna, if ours is similar, we probably need to provide shorter tees.
Okay. I'll kind of get with Andy on that. Honestly, I haven't even, I put a tee in it, but it never even occurred to me to test the longer tee. So we'll try it out. If not, I'll make sure that maybe we add some into those bag stands up there so that when people are up there, they can use it. Reminder that overseeding on turtle fairways is gonna happen. We have that scheduled for the 26th of November. Being that we don't have the spreaders and things like that to accommodate the large scale on fairways, I have a company coming in scheduled for that day. It'll be a one-day process and then we'll be back open for play. So again, that's November 26th. We're gonna be doing some work to the, in the next few weeks, to the practice bunker over at the range. We're trying to put some drainage in and get that to drain a little better and also kind of reconfigure the bottom a little bit so it's not quite as deep a shot. And then just put new sand in. So that'll be happening over the next couple of weeks. Yesterday, we started on the front entrance drive. I know I met individually with everybody and kind of went through that. We started with some light demo yesterday. Monday, we'll do some more wholesale. We'll get all the oak trees out of there, get all the plant material out. Monday afternoon into Tuesday, we'll be hauling in fill and kind of creating that level area that we talked about. And then right now, on Wednesday, about 10 o'clock, the oak trees are scheduled to arrive. Hopefully by the end of the day, Wednesday, those will be in and staked and, and ready for just water. So we're gonna work as quick as we can to button all that up, but we're gonna be waiting a little bit on getting irrigation tweaked. And then obviously, we'll have to sod that. And I'm trying to coordinate the curbing aspect of that as well. Because we can't really finish grating to the edge of the road until we get the curbing in. So I did speak to a different contractor on the curbing yesterday, and I'm hopeful, I'm meeting with him Monday, that we can kind of button all that up together. But there should be no disruption to the flow of traffic or anything for the clubhouse other than Wednesday, right when we're putting the trees in. And we'll do our best to route people through the parking lot and out if we need to with cones. I think Mike's got about 100 cones over there that we can use. So, so that'll be happening next week. And then we'll do our best to button that up. And then I'll be sending a communication to Tanya, who will then forward it on to you guys as far as the pavers up front and the trees near the clubhouse for the parking at the backdrop area. So that, that'll be coming up pretty quick as well, but I'm trying to pull all that cost together. So otherwise, we're just trying to get ready for season. Get, over the next couple of weeks with the temperatures changing, we'll really start working on some green speeds and things like that over on deer. So that both courses kind of match as close as we can get them. So that's really the bulk of what, what we've got going on.
Is that all? Seems like you have a lot going on. Opening the restaurant tomorrow morning at 11 o'clock. So finally, we're gonna be completely open. Everything is up and running. There's just, there's really just a few small items that kind of need attention. But they're still in the process of kind of get everything organized and prepping every single one of those items on that big menu. But I, and I really told Kevin is if, we just, we just need to make sure we're open. Even if we need to, there's a few items we're not ready for, fine, but I think we're gonna be ready for everything right off the bat. So I was concerned, really being on a Saturday, just kind of opening up with, with the Saturday groups and, you know, because, because there's gonna be, there's still gonna be a time that, you know, we really wanted to be a soft opening where, where we just didn't kind of get bum rushed and let the guys kind of work out some of the kinks. It's gonna take a little while. So I was concerned about the, about the golf groups on Saturday just kind of slamming it right off the bat. But I think, I think Cecile's group is going somewhere else, so it's, at least it's alleviated this time. And it'll give us at least four or five days to get a little bit settled in before we start getting really, really busy. And really, once, once we feel that it's, that we're kind of running up to speed and kind of, kind of have our legs underneath us, we'll, we'll start advertising heavily and start, it'll, it'll start getting busy. The, the tables, I, I finally got a confirmation. They're, they're coming sometime Monday. I don't know when Monday. So I, I actually found them. So they're, they'll, they'll be here Monday, and I have a crew actually that's, that's, that'll be here as well to, to get them put together. So the tables will finally be here. I think Tanya sent out kind of a membership pacing report that I, that I really just sent to her and sent it to you. And I guess we didn't put it in Adobe and it was in Excel and a few folks didn't really read it. But kind of right now where we sit, and really just comparing memberships sold at this time to this time last year, we're up 36 members, is that right? There are 36 members and almost $100,000 up. 16 of those 36 are, are from our new, our, our new program. Really, the rest of them are, are, are people who have either been members before or they're just signing up earlier. So, but remember, kind of last year, I talked a lot about the people who didn't re-sign last year because we had a whole bunch of medical issues. And people who stayed up in Ohio because they had a sick relative or, I think a lot of that. And, and we'll do an analysis of kind of, of what's going on. But I think a lot of those members that we had for some of those medical reasons last year, I just think they're back and they're re-upping. And, you know, and, you know, the, the courses are in better shape and we've certainly upped our game. And, but yeah, right now, the pacing is, is, is tremendous. We're 36 members and up $100,000 in, in cash flow right now on membership sales. What else? I guess that's it. We can, any questions before I give it back to Tony?
I was not able to open any of that stuff.
Well...
I'll resend it today.
We'll resend it and put it in, we'll, we'll put it in, in PDF and you'll be able to get it. So, okay.
Thanks, Cliff. For those of you that don't know, my name is Tony Chancey, Senior Vice President of Billy Casper Golf. And I'm here today for a couple reasons. Well, always whenever I get a chance to come down, I like to see the golf course and see the facility and see how we're progressing along in so many different areas. And especially at this time, with the FNB operation now all but completed and just getting ready to open. There was a lot of work that went into that, I'm sure, on your parts and certainly on Cliff's parts and, and Cliff's part and on other members of the, the management team here on site. And just wanted to sort of publicly thank them for the job that they did, and I think this thing is really turning out nice. I was able to take a tour of the kitchen and the FNB operation this morning. It looks, it looks really, really good. And I'm sure that the residents will appreciate it as they get a chance to sample it in the, in the time to come. And then also too, I think the board is aware, not sure if all the community is aware, but Cliff has tendered his resignation and is moving into another role in another area of the country. And I think closer to... of the country, and I think closer to his son and family in the Virginia market. And we're really, really sad to see him go. He's not just here at Sun and Lake. He's been with our organization, Billy Casper now, for a number of years in different facilities for us, and he's always done a phenomenal job everywhere he's been. And I think this particular situation really showed what he can do as a manager of a property, and not just the typical day-to-day stuff, but we've had anything but that during his tenure, and he's been able to handle all of it, handle all of it really, really well and very professionally. So, wanted to publicly thank, you know, Cliff for everything he's done at the facility. And that, of course, brings us on to what's next. Well, what's next, obviously, is we have to find a replacement for a big set of shoes there. Certainly weren't expecting it, so we didn't have someone just sitting in the hopper, if you will. We will go through the process of finding a candidate or sourcing out a candidate for the position. In the interim, our, Mike Lemire, will assume the duties of General Manager. Of course, we'll work closely with him to help support him. I know he's not been in that role before, but he obviously knows the club very well, and he certainly knows a lot about the F&amp;B operation. I'm sure Cliff and him have had a lot of conversation about how best to operate the club from the standpoint of service, et cetera. So, he'll sit in that role, and we will move along in our process. As to a timeline, everybody always wants to know. It, you know, could take us as much as maybe 60 days to find the right candidate. We're going to go about this in a manner that you'd expect, which is, you know, painstakingly first, advertising within our organization for someone who might want to come to this area to work, and then, of course, we have outside agencies that we work with to also source candidates. There may be some internal candidates who often want to, there are internal candidates who often want to come to Florida for the same reason so many of us have all come to Florida. So, we'll see what kind of interest we have there. I do have a couple of people already who have expressed interest, and so that's good. And I think we'll probably get a fair amount of people who will express an interest to come here. And we'll also, of course, should anyone onsite, including Mike, for example, be interested in the position, then he'll also go through that same process, too. And we'll come back with the best candidate to put in front of you for your review and approval. So, just ask to please be patient with us as we go through it, because I think you'll want us to make sure that we get the best person that we can. Brought Cliff here, which we went through a lot to get, you know, to get to that decision, and I think it was the absolute right decision. So, we'll go through that same process. That's what I came here to say, and obviously to thank Chris, thank Cliff. So, if the board has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Yeah, I don't, good morning.
Hey, Mr. Gilpin, how are you?
Fine. I agree with you, and I'm glad to see that you're going to act as quick as you can to replace Cliff. But I just don't, I think 60 days is appropriate, but I don't want anything to happen like when we got Cliff. It took, it took a long time, and a lot of things got out of whack while we were waiting to get Cliff. So, I hope we expedite this. I know you're doing a fine job finding some replacements for us, but I just want to make sure that we don't set on this. And I certainly want you to meet with the supervisors sometime soon before or after Cliff goes.
Yeah, absolutely. Can do that and assure you that, you know, our company runs off of a platform, right? An operations platform. So, we have a tremendous amount of support within our organization. Some general managers need more of it than others, or avail themselves of it more than others. Cliff's a very experienced manager and did not need as much from us from a support perspective as some other folks do. Mike stepping into this role will need a lot more of that.
Yeah.
And so, we'll make sure that we cover those bases with him. And also, Cliff is, we've already had discussion about this, and as you can imagine, and Cliff will download him as much as possible. And I don't want to speak for Cliff, but I would assume that should Mike have any questions after Cliff leaves, I'm sure Cliff will be happy to pick up or answer the phone and help in any way he can.
That's all I have, and just nice seeing you.
Same here, Mr. Gilpin.
I'd just like to thank Cliff for what he's done. I'm not sure most of the people here realize how much he's worked on this kitchen project and how much money he's saved us, and how much he improved the drawings and the plans. If you go through that kitchen, and I don't know that everybody's going to get the opportunity to do that, but you can't help but be impressed with what used to be and now what is. I mean, it's like going from a Model T to a spaceship. We should have no more excuses that we can't do this or that or the other because of the kitchen. And, you know, we'll have some bumps in the road. I know, you always do when you start a new project, but wow, Cliff's done a heck of a job, and I really hate to see him go.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Stiegel, and I appreciate that, too. And as we were going through there this morning, and Cliff was showing me around, we could see the areas where he, pointed out the areas where he changed some of those drawings. And, you know, some personal experience, my own, working through kitchen designs and clubhouse designs and so forth, the amount of money that that translated to those, the ones that he pointed out to me was pretty substantial. So, again, that comes from a lot of experience.
Yeah, we're not talking 1,000. We're talking hundreds of thousands.
Yeah, that's six-figure stuff, for sure.
Yeah, I'd like to chime in as well as my appreciation of Cliff. I've not been in this role very long. He was here when I came, but I can see the leadership that he's given to the team, and based on what I've heard of the past, it's been great to have Cliff there. I've been in other roles in resort management, and Cliff has done terrific. So, I'm sad to see him go, and he's going to be a tough one to replace. So, you've got your challenge, but we've got this new facility over there, so we want to get a good guy in there as soon as we can, guy or gal.
Yes, absolutely.
I would echo that also. Cliff is a pretty amazing juggler. Did a great job and fought many, many battles that most of us don't even know about in the last six months. So, appreciation is an understatement. The other thing I appreciate is you're putting Mike in that position, because when Jim left, Ron was injured, but we never saw Ron, and he wasn't available. I think an onsite acting GM is a very important move, and I support that 100%.
Good. Well, thank you, Mr. Branson, and, you know, we'll do our absolute best, obviously, to work through this time as quickly as we can, try to ensure the stability of the facility. Cliff's, I believe, his last day is going to be Sunday, the 3rd, and, you know, he's wanted, wants to see this grand opening through and work out as many of the kinks as he can before he leaves. So, I think we have a little bit more time to spend with him. So, you know, encourage everyone, if you get a chance before he leaves, to say hi and maybe connect with him. It'd be great. And that's all I have. Thank you.
One other thing. I would echo Mike's comment, that I think it would be a good idea for you to meet with us to talk about what we see for the future and what we think our new manager's skillset should be.
Absolutely. Can do that. We'll get something scheduled and try to come out and do that with Tanya, and we can work that out. Sure thing.
I would also like to personally thank Cliff and working with him over the last year, year and a half. He's done a tremendous job with this project. I think the members and the residents should be proud to what they see today and tomorrow. And anyway, I just wanted to thank him and wish him the best.
Okay, since the agenda is somewhat of a juggling act also, I'm going to invite public comment on the Casper presentation. If anybody has anything they'd like to contribute. Thank you, Tony. Thanks, Cliff.
Thank you.
Okay, are we ready to talk about the table?
I make a motion, we, on table, resolution number 2019-1025-42.
Second.
Yes.
Supervisor Stiegel?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
President Branson?
Yes.
Mr. Jim Worth? We'll go ahead and engineer with Craig A. Smith.
Yeah, we did the, had a bid opening on the Matanzas reconfiguration. If you recall, you know, you've got some older pumps and some wet wells. We tried to repair the old wet well, and we bought some new pumps, or you guys bought some new pumps to replace the ones that were in there. When the contractor started working through that, you know, the bottom of the wet well was shot, so we had, we recommended putting in a new wet well. The original design of the area had a lot less sewer flows going towards it, so the wet well was underdesigned as well. The size of it, that contributed to the pump problems you were having. So, we redesigned the Matanzas wet well to go in next to it, and then you'll utilize the pumps that you have. We received two bids on it. One of the bids was around $255,000, and one was around $300,000. So, I'm here to recommend that we award the bid, or you award the bid to Daylin, who was the apparent low bidder, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have towards the bid.
I guess my first question is, how did we miss so much on the estimate of 150 to 165?
Well, there's a lot of contributing factors. One is, you know, that was done on a conceptual level, and, you know, we hadn't designed anything yet at the time. And, you know, if, it's a retrofit job, so there's some challenges there. There's some, you've got flows coming in four different directions. The wet well itself, when we crunched the numbers and looked at the elevations, the wet well, the new wet well is nearly 20 feet deep, which is, you know, a little concern in de-watering. We're shoehorning it next to the existing lift station, so, you know, there's some considerations there on shoring up and things like that, so the contractors have those challenges there. And so, yeah, we were a little shocked by the numbers, too, but once we got into the design itself and saw that, you know, the challenges, then that probably contributed to it. Plus, a lot of people are busy. We contacted, I think we probably contacted six or seven bidders. There were five, four or five plan holders, and three of them backed out at the last minute. We thought we were going to get some more competitive bids on this project, but I think people are really busy. There's some access issues trying to get in there, get the equipment in there, get the big, large wet well that's got to go in there. So, but those probably contributed to the fact that we underestimated the original cost or what it was going to take to do that work.
I mean, I'm assuming that you think this is not an inappropriate number. We have no comparison, so we don't know.
No, the bids, if you factor out the electrical work, because there was a big difference in the electrical work price, if you take that out of the picture, the bids were within $500 of each other. So, to me, that told me that there was a well-defined scope of work in there. It begs the question on what happened with the electrical work. And it's, you know, it's hard to guess what that is, but I've asked the low bidder if they're comfortable with that number, because my electrical engineer thinks it's a relatively low number. And so, the contractor's comfortable that he can do the electrical work for that price. So, if he's comfortable with it, then I'm not going to argue about saving. We do have $10,000 contingency in the bid. That's just in case they run into something unforeseen, but that's not, you know, that's not money the contractor automatically gets, he's got to fight for. But you can take that off the top of the bids.
We're kind of between a rock and a hard place. What we have is inadequate, and we're having to patch it up every time you turn around, and that costs thousands of dollars every time. So, you have the same access issues as well as other stuff. So, I don't know that we have a choice. I guess if you'd said it, if your estimate had been 250, we'd probably be sitting here going, yeah, okay.
Right. No, I understand completely. I was very disappointed to see those bids as well.
When you were explaining that, you indicated some concerns with the ability to do the design that's engineered, or with the design of the engineering based on the challenges that we have?
Concern with the construction, with the challenge. You mean?
I'm not sure. You said concern, and my red flag went off.
Well, concern with the prices came in a lot higher than what we had estimated.
Okay. So, you're sure it's properly engineered, and this contractor can properly
Yes.
do that engineering?
Yes.
Construction.
Yeah, the subcontractors they've got, they're familiar with the site, they're local. They've worked on that particular lift station, so I'm very comfortable with that. They know what they're getting into.
How would this function while we're fixing it? Will there be any downtime or anything?
No, they'll be able to stick the new wet well in. There'll be a little bit of temporary bypass, because they've got a couple force mains in there, so they'll do some bypasses around where they're going to stick the new wet well, and then the old one will continue to function.
Okay.
And then at the last minute, they'll tie them in and convert it over to the others. So, it should be a smooth process.
Are we planning to demo the old wet well when it's done and move it out, or it will just sit there in the ground?
It will become a manhole, so the plumbing will come to it. We're going to rehab it because they kind of patched it up the last time. We're going to patch up the interior, recode it, pour some concrete on the base of it to sturdy it up. So, we're rehabbing that, and that's going to stay there.
And then what's the timeframe for getting this project done?
I can't remember what was in the bid, but it's probably about a three-month process. I'm trying to get some feedback from the contractor on lead times on the wet well and the electrical components.
How long do you anticipate the electrical components to take? Because that'll be the first step of the project, is to get that ordered. Is that correct?
Yeah, we've got to get both those main parts. That's going to be your long lead item, is get those ordered. The electrical engineer told me it would probably take about 12 weeks to get the electrical. They can operate the new pumps on the old electrical panel temporarily if they have to.
Okay, that's right. We did talk about that.
Yeah, so if they get the wet well going and get all the plumbing squared away, and they still don't have the electrical work, they can do some temporary wiring to the new lift station and operate it that way until they can get that up and running.
I would like to see the construction side of it done prior to Christmas, you know, prior to the end of December. And then if we have to go back in and change out the electrical, that'll be the last step of the project, just because of, you know, our golf courses are crowded at that point by January. We don't, and to get the equipment mobilized and then back out would be a good thing prior to, you know, the end of December. So, that's the goal.
Yeah, we're going to encourage the contractor on I'll probably talk to him on my way home. Encourage them to get the shop drawings in so we can turn those around quickly, get the equipment ordered, and expedite that.
Any other board comment? I just want to say to the audience, I'm not sure if you know, it's $259,000 is what we're going to spend on that lift station. And there was another quote of $295, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so, just so everybody out there knows what we're doing. Or $255, I'm sorry. Any public comment?
Tom Coste, resident. I just have a question with regard to some studies that were done in the past. I wonder if in this project, consideration was given to the possibility of reversing the flow to the area out in Unit 6 in the future? The plant over near Tanglewood, it's our understanding, is right at about 60% capacity. And there's been talk about sending flow from that, overflow from that plant to the northern plant, which is up on the other side of the motel. We're in the process of possibly selling 1,500 or so lots over here in this area, which is right adjacent to Tanglewood. There's also another, probably over 1,000 lots north of Sunlake Boulevard that'll eventually have to go to that northern sewage treatment plant, which is about one-third the capacity of the one that is at 60% near Tanglewood. I'm just curious if any consideration was given to the possibility of reversing that flow to the area where the district is hung on to about 200 lots as a possible future sewage treatment plant?
That wasn't part of this project. We have discussed it a little bit with staff and trying to convert some of that flow. So we have, we have mentioned it and we've talked about trying to get that done.
So nothing happens here that would negate future consideration?
Right, nothing.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Chrissy?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor? Supervisor Hotteling?
Yes.
President Branson?
Yes. The resolution number 2019-10/25-43, resolution to Sunlake Sebring Improvement District to purchase utility trash pumps under state contract with Thompson Pump for $38,235.95.
Move approval.
Second.
Good morning, supervisors. This resolution in front of you today is to approve two portable utility trash pumps. We have budgeted $40,000 for this purchase. The compressor unit, which is a high-efficiency portable unit, is priced at $36,148. And the other utility trash pump is priced at $2,000. This will allow the pumps to move from lift stations in case of failures and power outages. And this is under the Florida Sheriff's Association contract.
We have generators at each pumping station, correct?
We have generators, yes. We have one that is not operational and we have ordered that unit. Should be in any time. So out of our 11 lift stations, we have 10 that do have generators. Yes, sir.
So this would be, in essence, a backstop for a facility that was out for some reason other than a generator? Or if the generator there was out? I mean, this basically is insurance, if I understand it correctly?
It is insurance, and our lift stations are designed with, I don't know if all of them are designed this way, but the bigger ones are designed with two pumps. And we've had situations where we have a pump failure, which allows only one. And the, like, Matanzas is a lift station where it alternates power right between the pumps, I don't know for how many hours. Does it go?
It cycles.
All cycling?
Usually.
We have had a situation where we've had both pumps go down. One went down, the other one had, what, it rags and all kinds of things go through. It shut down and it left us in a really bad situation. These pumps will allow to pull the flow in the case of a failure of both pumps.
It's an insurance policy.
Yes.
You're right, exactly what it is.
The pumps can also be used in other places throughout the district. Like when we were doing work with the Unit 4 wastewater treatment plant, they use it to transfer flows from one tank to another, and these will be able to do the same. So in any instance where we need to move water or liquid, they can be dual-use, because the trash pump's very versatile with the trash it can pump, so.
Just wondered, could we possibly use that on the golf course when we have issues? They might be too big, I don't know.
Yeah, I believe in the past, when, I think just right after the hurricanes, we were using it to pump out of one of the main ponds into some of the drainage system that was getting overwhelmed. So we have used it in the golf course before.
Any other questions? Any public comment? Chrissy?
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hotteling?
Yes.
Supervisor Stiegel?
Yes.
President Branson?
Yes.
I'd just like to say this, at least, is $2,000 towards the overprice of the well that we're just approved?
Resolution number 2019-10-25-44, a resolution to Sunlake Sebring Improvement District approving contracts with David S. Schumacher, P.A., for general counsel services, and with McClure and LaBozo for foreclosure services. Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, supervisors, the contracts of both entities are attached. I don't know if you noticed, there was a, I did a $10 reduction in my hourly rate, which was previously $175 through McClure and LaBozo. Will now be 165, based on the slight reduction in services I'll specifically be providing. And that $10 was added to the John K. McClure, P.A., for the legal secretaries at paralegals for the work that they'll be doing. There's one primary paralegal, Doreen Ryan, who does, you know, all of the foreclosure work that I, you know, I supervise her on, but 95% of that work is done by her. She's been doing it for 18, 19 years. She's very experienced, and so that's why we've kind of taken this process is so that she can continue to use her expertise in doing these district foreclosures. So any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Really, this just doesn't change our representation in any way other than two separate as opposed to one.
Correct.
The concern I would like to express, I've only been on the board for less than a year, and I've had some concerns with the legal advice that we've gotten. I've talked to Tanya, and she's comfortable with a working relationship, but we've had situations with Unit 16 where we thought we could have a process to rezone it. That didn't work. The amendment to how we do appointments didn't work. We've had issues with other things. And I'm concerned that we're getting legal advice that isn't totally thought through and worked through with whoever you need to work things through with before we start making directions and decisions. And we're clearly dealing with some complicated issues here at the district and have been for some time. So I guess I want to be sure that you're aware that there is concern about the legal advice we're getting. We, you know, you've got a long experience with us, which is a good thing. But we just want to be sure that we're paying for legal advice and that the advice that we're getting is going to help us move forward instead of putting us in rolling motion.
Understood. And as I say, part of that is, you know, dealing with the county. They have their attorney, and if you put 10 attorneys in the room, you're going to get 10 different opinions most of the time. So moving forward, I'm going to try and do a better job of communicating with the county attorney on issues that involve the county before making representations to the board. You know, I say, I'm still convinced that certain things can get done, but whether they can get done or will get done are, you know, two kind of separate issues. And I just want to make sure that I'm going to let you know that I'm going to continue to work with the county attorney and their new assistant county attorney on stuff that involves them before I start making representation to the board.
Okay.
Just for clarification, it's not about legality, is it?
No, not in my opinion, it's about risk. It's a lot of it's about risk, because when we ask the county to make changes to its ordinances, it's absorbing the risk. You know, if we make the change and someone doesn't like that change, they go after the county, because the county is what gives us our power. And the county is willing to take on certain amounts of risk, and we may be willing to take on a certain amount of risk, but they may not. And since they are the one that holds, they hold the power, and so if they're not willing to absorb the risk, then it doesn't get done.
Any other board discussion? Any public comment?
I hate to keep doing this, Tom Coste again. So with this new arrangement, will McClure and LaBozo be handling the sale of Unit 12, or will that be yourself?
Well, that'll happen on December 3rd, so yeah, I'll be handling that foreclosure sale. I'll be attending that foreclosure sale.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment? Chrissy?
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hotteling?
Yes.
Supervisor Stiegel?
Yes.
President Branson?
Yes. I am asked discretion from road improvement and traffic calming.
Drew Jones, Polston Engineering. We've been working with Mike and George, and as well Tanya, on determining what we can do for traffic calming, given the report we received from Mrs. Cruz, or Mrs. Teich, excuse me, with Cruz. She gave us quite a few options, which y'all should be familiar with, because I believe all you are here. Some of those were within budgets we could stand, and some of them were, we'd probably want to plan, put those in like a five-year or a 10-year plan. They were all good, they were all good ideas. But we were, I know we have a number of petitions that we have that have been kind of on hold until she got through with her study. And she did, she did agree with a number of calming devices that we've been looking into. We're trying to not put any more speed bumps if we can help it, but we're not opposed to putting more tables. And in the, in the report you got, we were looking in, we're looking into cushions, speed cushions. The big thing we liked about those, if y'all remember, she discussed ambulance and fire truck traffic getting slowed down by tables and bumps, which that's something we don't want to do if we can help it. The purpose of the cushion is to provide a speed table-like traffic calming, but if they're working properly, the ambulances and the fire truck can straddle them and not get slowed down, or very minimally slowed down. I did find a report that, like a speed table or a speed hump, they're around six seconds of slowing down for the ambulance, and where a speed cushion, since they straddle, it's more like one second of slowdown, which they do some, but very minimal. So we were trying to address in this report all the different locations that we got petitions from. We do want to address all of the locations. We do need to know how they will be funded if we do buy any of these devices. We want to, we'd like to do, or start out with three locations with the speed cushions. And we would be addressing three different locations in the petitions. But we would also like, we believe when y'all, your agreement was to look into a speed, a radar speed sign. I don't know if we've gotten anywhere exactly with the sheriff's department or if that ever panned out on issuing any tickets. But we still, we still would like to at least present the option of a speed sign. It would be a portable trailer, very similar to, well, slightly similar to the ones you've probably seen in Sebring. I think, I can't remember if Avon Park had one. There's a couple other municipalities, I think, that have had them at different times. We would like, instead of just getting a straight speed sign, we would recommend getting an actual traffic information sign that also does speed. That way, if we have an emergency, or we're doing a closure, or there's an event going on, we could direct traffic along with it, so we're not just a single-use, so we're not just going after speed information. Yeah, if we have a water break and the road has to be closed or divert, we can also pre-warn and put it up closer to 27 and let people know what's going on. We did get some pricing for them, and they do have them that can actually record and data log. So if we needed more information on speed counts or counts of traffic, we could actually provide that. If we set it out for a week, or however long we wanted to do it, we could actually give actual data of how fast they're going and how many cars. Yeah, what time, what time they're speeding. It would do a full data log. We would like to do both of them if the budget exists for it. We also looked into fixed speed signs, but of course, with fixed radar signs, you're, you'd have, if you're wanting to isolate a certain area, you potentially have to do two on the same road if you wanted to get both directions. And then, of course, they're there unless you wanted to pay to pick them up and move them around, which would get costly too. Yeah, and each one of these would have a supplemental solar power, either the speed sign or the portable speed sign.
Drew, going back, the portable unit, it's budgeted, or we have estimated, what, for that? About $12,000, is that correct?
We were, if we do the straight speed sign, they're around $12,000 with data logging. If we did a full, if we did a full information sign that did all that, we were looking at around, with, yeah, with 18 and 1/2, with, that would include shipping and, or should include freight with it. But we did, we did get a price on both of those. The 12, the $12,000, they, the company did not have us on their account to give us a quote, but a lot of them have government contract pricing or they do a reduction for government. We didn't get, we didn't get the reduction price just because they were, they wanted us to set up an account and prove, or do all the paperwork before they give us an actual quote, but.
This is a portable unit, correct?
Correct.
The one that you're talking about?
Correct.
And the second one, I mean, as long as we have a sign that collects data, that is what we want?
Correct.
So that's, that's the estimate?
And the second one would also be a big plus. Like if we have a water break or we have to divert traffic, all we have to do is put it on the sign, and when people come up, up the street, they'll be able to see what's going on. Like boiled water, notice we can put things like that. If there's a special function, for an extra $4,000, you know, $4,000 or $5,000, it's actually a plus to have it because the information gets out to everybody. A lot of people don't have internet or, you know, so if we send stuff out, they don't get it. And we get that all the time. Oh, I didn't know I was supposed to boil water. I didn't know there was a problem. At least this way, they're riding by these signs, you know, and we can put these signs in an area where we are having a problem. So it just won't be used for speeding. It'll use for the whole district for anything. Say, for instance, a meeting today. You know, we could put it out, "Meeting today," you know, I mean, you know. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of different things we can use for the sign for a little more money. And we would also store it in the barn there, and actually, security or maintenance would be responsible, you know, to put it out daily. It'll be chained down, chained down, you know, so it can't get stolen and stuff. So it's actually a plus to get the more expensive one, I mean, so.
Give me the numbers again, we're talking 12 or 18?
12 versus 18.
But we don't-
But, we don't know for sure. That, that would be a maximum, 'cause under a government contract, we would expect it to be a...
Right, yeah, that's not a government contract, the eighteen, 'cause we got it from just a vendor, and he, and the vendor that we talked to deals with the whole country, and they don't do government pricing. But, but I did talk to Gator, and, you know, he said there are some places out there that we could look into. So, no. I mean, we're looking to get the best, but it also gives us, you know, much more things to use. We could put it in front of district office, and "Happy today," whatever, happy birthday, whoever, you know? But, it's a plus. It really is. So...
Well, it's a plus if we wanna use it for a lot of different things. Our, our primary concern right now is traffic calming.
But, we've run into, in the past, when we had, you know, the boiled water notices, a water break, road closed for the day, you know, you know, I mean, you know, for the little amount of money, it really is the way to go, I think, but...
Well, but if we're, if we're utilizing it as a sign, then we're not utilizing it for traffic calming?
No, we would be using it for both. We would use, I mean, basically, it would be traffic, but there are other options, and that's what I'm trying to explain. You know, there's other options to have.
Well, I, I can put up a, a, a share, what do you call it? Basically, a, a small stand with a sign that says "Road closed."
Right.
And not have to use my traffic calming device that is telling people you're going too fast, and if I'm using it as a sign, then I'm not being able to use it to tell people you're going too fast.
Well, I don't think our plan is to use it, use it for traffic every single day. You know, it's to put it in different areas.
Well, I would agree. We're gonna put it in different areas, but continually to tell people they're going too fast.
Right. Oh, absolutely. You know, but, you know, there's, there's different options to use. I mean, and why wouldn't we get, get something that we could use for, for the whole district than just for traffic? It's your call.
The, the other question I have is, we had talked about getting one that might be able to issue tickets and finding out whether or not we can issue tickets.
Yeah, and that's, I think what we need to find out, and I can, I'll be happy to talk to Drew about this, but the, it's not gonna be my recommendation that we change our, or we request a change in ordinances that gives us the power to issue tickets. So, what we would need to do is, we need to coordinate with the Sheriff's Department and make sure whatever sign that we buy collects the right data, so that we can, so they would be able to issue a ticket based on the data that was collected. So, if that's, if that's even possible. And so, that's what we're gonna, yeah, we, yeah, so we've gotta check, we're gonna have to work with the Sheriff's Department to find out how we can do that, or if we can do that.
Yeah, well, let's get that done, 'cause I think it's information that we want.
Speed cushions are a distinct alternative. What kind of cost is there for those?
We looked at a couple different places on speed cushions. They range, they're, they're a little different, 'cause you're, you need one speed cushion unit per lane, the way they're sold. The speed bumps, they're, you just buy like a 20-foot wide speed bump, and it's, yeah, they're, they're two different units. But, we were looking, by the time you add in some striping, two speed cushions per, this is per location, and the signage that we normally put up saying caution, speed bump or speed cushion ahead, we're gonna be between $2,500 and $3,000 per location. And that would include shipping, and that also depends on if we can find a better deal. We didn't, we didn't contact government pricing locations yet, but we're just trying to get a, a good budget number. But, they would not exceed $3,000 by the time we included some thermo striping signage for both directions and the two units.
Actually, you gotta have two per lane.
Yeah, it's, it's...
Right. No, it's four per lane. I mean, four per road, two per lane.
Two per lane.
Well, it would, well, that's a, that's a double lane. There, it would be one, one per lane, so wherever we have, it would require two units. Like, if we stuck one on Cremona, or if we stuck one on Sunrise, there'd be two units, one to hit each lane. 'Cause they're, they're approximately, I think they're between six and seven feet wide, and are typically, our lanes are anywhere from nine to 10 feet wide, so you'd stick one center in the, in each lane. That way, your emergency traffic could straddle it. If we had a unique location where there was a turn lane or something that people could swing out to, you'd, you'd wanna consider adding a third, but generally, it'd be two per roadway.
I guess I'm confused. So, you would, if I'm driving across one of them, I'm gonna hit it with one side of the car?
No, no, no. You're, generally, you could potentially swing out into the middle of the road and hit it on one, one side of your car, but if you're staying in your lane, your car is gonna be narrower than the, the speed table, whereas...
Okay, so, so the emergency vehicle is wider than the car, and that's the reason?
Correct.
Gotcha.
My only thing is that, I don't care what we do, I'm in favor of it, whatever it is, but I want it to work. And we owe, we owe to people who have come in here to get something done. I don't wanna spend six more months. I just, I want these people to have, I know what it's like where I live, where people were speeding. It's nice to have something done for the people that are really concerned. And we need to do something, and I don't care what, but it's gotta work. So, that's, I'll work with everybody, but I want it to work.
Correct. And that's, that's why we're proposing now to get two or three of them, to install them. Ultimately, if we could, get enough funding to get for three of them, install them, verify that they're working, and as we go on, add more as they're, as they're needed.
That's, that's fine. I just, I don't wanna spend six more months deciding on what we're gonna do. I just think we owe to a few communities to get something done and try something. That's all I'm saying.
So, what do you want from us at this point, Tom?
Um, right now, we need to, we need to budget, uh...
Well, we wanna know how much we can, how far to go on this. Should we, I mean, are we gonna get the sign? Uh, what we like to do is get the sign and at least budget enough for three different areas to start.
Well, let's, let's work on that, because we need to come up with a budget of what we have currently. So, we need to determine how much we have currently to spend before we do a request like that. But you said that, I think we need to clarify the three areas to the board that you're talking about, because you have, on page two, we have a recommendation list, and you said three areas.
Yeah, for, to start out with.
Yes.
We were looking at, we were looking at Cantoria, one, one location at Cremona to start, and I know Cantoria, they asked for three or nothing, but I don't know that that's, that that might be a little extreme to start out with three on their road. And then, we were wanting to do, we were looking at Sunrise for the third, if we got, if we got approval and our budget for the, to do three.
So, I don't know what we have in the budget.
Well, that's what we need to determine. We need to bring back to you what the cost would be to implement each of these, and what our budget is, and do we have the, the budget to handle the speed cushions, the speed tables, in addition to the portable unit? So, at this point, I think it's our job to come back to you with a, with a budget of what we have, and then, and then we'll review it at that point.
Can we see that by the 15th?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, per our prior discussions, I thought we were gonna bring back the groups that had expressed concerns to get their feedback on what they think of these solutions, since it's not exactly what they asked for. I thought we were gonna have a working session with the communities.
I think it's a good idea, but I think the first step is to determine where our, our budget is, and then where the board wants to go with this.
I think we need to involve the communities before we decide on what we're gonna do. We need their feedback.
I don't know, should, should Mike sit down with each one that did a petition and tell them what we're thinking about, or how do you, I mean, I don't know that we have a board meeting?
I don't have a schedule of the HOA meetings, because we're talking, what Manor Hill might be January? When's the next meeting for Manor? January, so we're talking January for that. I mean, I don't have a best solution.
We could meet with the board, each board, and just let them know, if you wanna do that.
Don't have the board itself?
Yeah, each board, I mean, like the preserve, I know, we meet with them, and, you know, you know, each area, just meet with the, the board and explain to them, you know, what we're gonna do, and, you know, 'cause they're the ones that got the petition going, so it's a good idea, so...
And, and invite them to come to the meeting. We're, we're gonna get the presentation as to how much money we're spending and what we're gonna do.
Yes. So, for the 15th?
That's fine.
Can we have?
Yeah.
We'll get something together.
I think that's a good point, Neil.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other board comment?
But, I mean, I guess I'm in favor of doing whatever we need to do. The question is, how much money is it gonna cost, Mike and Drew?
Well, right now, we figure we're gonna be around $30,000 to do, do the three areas and buy the sign, and that's...
But for us to approve it, we need to know exactly what it's gonna cost.
Yeah, and that's what we're gonna bring back on the 15th.
I mean, well, we were just getting rough estimates, and, you know, and we wanted to bring, you know...
I mean, if we need to do a budget amendment to fix this, we'll, we'll still do a budget amendment and fix it, but the issue's gonna be, this, this is bigger than a bread box. It's not gonna be three locations. When you do three locations, you're gonna have 10 more that want them. So, the question is, how much money are you willing to spend eventually?
Okay.
The, the speed sign should be able to move everywhere and...
Anywhere.
Hopefully, impact whatever location we're having an issue with. But we also need to be able to set up a way for people who think we have a speeding issue for us to put that sign there, and then we're gonna know whether they're speeding or not.
Right.
You know, right now, we don't have any information, and, and we're just kinda winging it. So, I, I think getting the traffic information is maybe more important than the speed sign itself, frankly.
Yeah.
So, that definitely needs to be part of it. The rest of it, I can take for lead.
Okay.
Any public comment?
Good morning. My name's Gary Rollinson. I'm a resident. I have a question regarding the cushions. You said it would be between $2,500 and $3,000, depending on location, correct? Is that...
Well, depend, yeah, that would include painting and signage.
Correct. All the added extras.
Yeah.
Why would a site location like a street be different in any spot?
It's not...
Requiring a $500...
It's not necessarily the location. If I said that, I misspoke. I meant the, wherever we acquire the material from. So, if we buy the speed cushion from one location, or if we get government contract pricing...
Okay, so that was the location?
Right. Yeah, yeah.
All right, so, once, once we get these cushions, the installation cost is pretty much gonna be fixed.
Correct. Any, any two, no, no, yeah, sorry about that.
Um, the second question I have, Tanya, can I get a, a copy of that list? We've got the first three that we're gonna be doing, I guess, with the first part of the budget, right? The locations, Cantoria, Sunrise?
Yeah, what, what we need to do is put together a budget for this entire project. You know, I think the board, we need to see that initially, and then, so, yes, you can have a copy of the engineering report that Drew did, and that is listed on page two.
Yeah, is it on, is it on the website with the other...
It's, it's available on the website.
Okay. Do you have a specific page I can go to, rather than searching the whole thing?
It's page two.
Page two, uh...
It, it's, when you go on the website, there's a section that says, and if you wanna just give me your email?
That's ours.
I can email it to you.
I'll do that right after. I got one last question about these lights. Essentially, I guess we're looking for three different signs, or at least that's what I'm getting here. We're looking for a sign that gives us data and speed warning. We're looking for a sign that gives us data, speed warning, and a whole bunch of other advertising abilities, correct? The road closed, so to speak? Correct. I think that's the term you used.
Yeah.
And then, we're looking for a third type of sign, which includes the county sheriff's department giving out tickets...
No.
Based on the data. Is that pretty much where we're at here?
We're not looking for three. We're looking at alternatives.
Well, three different types. We're looking at three different types of signs, correct? Did I just summarize that? One that'll give tickets?
I don't think so. I think it's just two. We, what we have to determine is the sign that, that provides, or that collects the data. We need to coordinate or consult with the Sheriff's Department to determine if the data that the sign collects is sufficient to issue tickets. That's what we're trying to find out.
There are signs out there that collect the data, I believe, that hopefully the county council will take, so we can issue tickets. But I understand there's a considerable difference in price between the ones that just give you who came by at what time and flashing your speeding, versus one that takes pictures of tags, gives you day, night. But, all right, well, that's gonna be in the budget, so there's only two types of signs, right?
Right.
One that collects data and all the information needed for the sheriff's department, in addition to warning the speed, correct? Is that kinda where we're at?
Well, it also gives us the information of when this speeding is going on. We don't just have to use it for the sheriff's department.
I understand. Yeah. I understand that and what's going on.
Yeah. It's kinda like a Volkswagen tour Cadillac. You know, we're looking at the different prices of signs and the information that gives back to us.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
I have one question on the signs. Are you allowed to put these signs on Sunland Lake Boulevard?
Not without permission. Not without permission.
Yeah, we would have to get permission.
That's a county road, right?
Correct. We'd have to get permission, but if it's, if we're not collecting tickets or anything, I doubt they would prevent us from putting it, as long as we're not obstructing any view or being a safety concern, but...
So, you have to get permission from whom to put the sign that flashes how fast you're going?
It would either be the county engineer or the head of Road and Bridge, which is Kyle Green currently. I think either one of those two or both of them would probably have to approve us installing it or setting it there.
But that's just Sunland Lake Boulevard.
That's what I'm talking about, 'cause that's, that's a drag strip there. I used to live on it, and that is a drag strip, so I...
You know that part?
Okay, thank, thank you.
This has probably been addressed, but I was wondering if some of the equipment, if it gets to that decision about the money, can the ticket fee increase? Is there a way for someone to, because I don't know, that might not work, but if the ticket fees are increased, wouldn't that help? Slow people down, maybe? Or at least, if you increase the tickets with this increased equipment, it will help pay for it? Kinda, not really? We don't get that money, but...
That's all gonna be, have to be determined by the Sheriff's Department.
Oh.
I doubt if they'd be willing to share them.
No, you're right.
Paul Stone, resident. I swear I wasn't gonna come up here, but...
Why did you?
If you got a speed cushion that allows an ambulance to go by, why would we think our residents wouldn't go, "Hey, I don't have to go across that thing." So, now you have oncoming traffic, because the guy in the car, he don't wanna go over the bump either, so he'll swerve.
The, the intent with those is the, the ambulance can straddle it, which is...
Right.
With the, the car, the only thing the car's gonna be able to do, and the end of the day, they're gonna be able to miss one set of wheels left or right, which you're correct. It's, it's...
I understand it. We all drive, and if you see a pothole, you swerve. If you see a bump, and I can miss half of it, I'm gonna miss half of it.
Any additional public comment? Okay, any other items?
None.
Questions in communication?
None.
Staff reports?
Okay.
Nope. I don't have anything today. I gave you my report, I, I sent you my reports. Any questions on them? Thank you.
General Counsel, report?
officials regarding, uh, the proposed changes to the voting, uh, and, and appointment of supervisors and, and the moving to the five, uh, popularly elected seats. Uh, the, what is going to happen right now, or the, the current, the current plan, as I am in the, the process of drafting a letter to the Attorney General requesting an Attorney General opinion about the, the switching to the five popularly elected seats, as well as our process for, uh, appointment of supervisors who resign. So once that's completed, uh, and we get a response from the state, that response from the state will determine how we draft the proposed changes to the, the county ordinances. So hopefully, uh, that letter will go out before, uh, the next board meeting. I can't tell you how long it'll take to get a response, um, but I'll go back and review. You know, we've requested Attorney General opinions in the past, and I don't recall them being incredibly lengthy, so hopefully we'll have a response by the end of the year, and then we can start that process of, of re, uh, defining or redrafting the, the ordinances for the, the five popularly elected seats. We'll come back with a proposal for that before we, obviously, before we move forward. Uh, and, uh, earlier today, I, I misspoke. I think I stated that the, the foreclosure sales December 3rd, the special meeting that we're going to have is on December 3rd. The actual foreclosure sale is December 4th.
Dave, uh, I got a question with, with you and Tanya and Neil, meeting with them. Is there anything we should know that you're recommending that, you know, I think the rest of us should know what you guys are recommending and what we're doing?
Well, that, that's based on the, the last board meeting. It's, you know, we're going to, the plan is to, to find out what we have to do to move to, to, to five popularly elected seats, uh, and then we'll come back to the board and say that if, if this is what the board wants, this is the process. And at that point is when the board will vote, is that something we're going to do or is that something we're not going to do?
Okay, so it's going to be, when you bring it back, it's going to be an either or, right?
Correct, yeah, correct, correct.
Is that in addition to changing the appointed seats?
That, that process for, if, if, if we can bring it back, I, I guess we could potentially bring it back as two separate issues, um, because no matter what, you know, we have the current, the, we have three popularly elected seats now, and the, the, the thing that we're looking to change is how those populated, popularly elected seats are replaced if, you know, if there's a, if there's a vacation in one of those seats. So if that doesn't really have anything to do with the changing to five popularly elected seats, but since we're already drafting a letter to the Attorney General, we might as well try and get both questions answered at the same time. So that way, if you, we just do decide to take both steps, you know, we've got our answers on how to move forward.
Okay, well, one step doesn't affect anybody other than us in essence and gives the, the residents more power.
Right.
The other step affects the landowners pretty negatively, so, you know, it's one simple deal and another complicated deal, so we, we need to make sure we don't confuse the two.
Correct, and we'll, and we'll make sure that, you know, when that issue comes up for a, a board, uh, for a decision by the board, that we talk to the, the major landowners and let them know that, that, that it's going to occur, that meeting, and they, if they want to come and voice their opinions, that, that they need to attend.
Just so we don't put both on the same, I, you know, I don't want one holding up the other, so...
Okay, no problem.
You not only have the major landowners, you also have the non-citizens who can't vote in the...
Yeah, and, and honestly, I mean, the, the landowners' meeting takes place, I believe it's January 24th, uh, of next year, um, and so if we haven't come to a, you know, a complete resolution or how that's going to occur, we can have, make sure it's brought up at that meeting as well.
Okay, General Manager's report?
Everyone has a copy of the adopted budget for 2019, 2020. I would like to thank Omar and his team. Uh, they have, they've been issued a distinguished budget presentation award by the Government Finance Officers Association, so when you get a chance, uh, take a look at it. His, him and his team, they, they put some time into this, so I want to thank him, uh, for taking this budget to the next level.
On that, uh, Tanya, I haven't had a chance to look at it since we just got it, but did they go into detail as to what each amenity is costing us to, to go back and provide further detail on like the swimming pool, how much, how much money we spend on the swimming pool versus just having it all lumped into one?
Not in this budget adoption. Uh, that is something that, in what Mr. and Supervisor Stiegel is speaking of, is that in our recreation services, we have multiple amenities in the cost center. We have pool, we have tennis, we have labor, and so what he has asked us to do is break that down a little bit further so we can see the true cost of the pool, the maintenance and the staffing, uh, and within our recreational amenities. And so, uh, that's not in this budget, but that is something that, uh, we've talked about internally, putting together separately.
Okay. Daniel, what's the status on the shuffleboard and...
The status on the shuffleboard is that, you know, we have, we've been awarded funding from RPAC. Um, I believe during the budget process, there was questioning about, you know, do we go ahead with the eight shuffleboard courts? Do we add to it? Do we not? And I believe the appropriate action is to bring back to the board at the next meeting a, you know, I can just mention it, is there any, any other suggestions on how we move forward with this project? Because we do need to put it out for bid. Uh, we have been awarded monies for the eight shuffleboard courts, including the lighting, including, you know, all the, um, accessories with that, but there was some discussion about possibly changing that, and I, I don't want to do anything until we talk through that as a board.
Okay, I, I didn't know there was, do we, we must have a supervisor or two that want to do something, change something?
Well, there is, there is discussion.
Because I thought we had approved it, so...
We, we have approved it within our budget. I know what our budget is. Uh, we have the funding from RPAC. Uh, I just want to put it in front of the board again, just to show you the design that we, that Drew has in place for us, so we can go ahead and move forward with the bid.
Okay.
That's all, so...
Is it ready?
Yep. On November 7th, uh, we have a meeting, myself, President Branson, and Ariel, and the Advent Health Team to, as a follow-up to their presentation to the board about the Wellness Center. So they have requested to have lunch with us, just to talk about that meeting and to talk about any of our concerns, and that'll be on November 7th. Uh, also, November 12th, myself and Omar, we have a phone conference scheduled with Eric Sawyer, tax collector, to discuss the uniform method of collection with him. Um, also, I sent out an email to the board about world design marketing and the landing page. Our new landing page is up. It is under visit suninlake.com. Uh, the, the challenges that we had with livesuninlake.com is that we did not have the rights nor the passwords, nor did we know when it was set up, and so, uh, we, we're going to, we're using visit suninlake, and if you get a chance, take a look at it. Uh, we're moving forward with our marketing campaign. Also, I'm looking into a quote for an appraisal for the Unit 12 properties, so I should have that early next week, and if any of you are interested in knowing what that appraisal fee would be, I'd be glad to send it, send it to you.
I think it's appropriate that we do that, so we have...
Absolutely.
Some informed bidding, as opposed to just winging it.
Uh, Tanya, I had a couple people, uh, tell me that over here in our workout place, it's been awfully hot in there, I guess 85 degrees. Is, are we having problems?
Yes, we did, and it's been fixed. Yeah.
It's fixed?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Any comments?
None.
Who, Dennis?
None.
Committee reports?
None.
Public comment? Discussion to and from the board?
I had a question for David. Uh, we have Louis Longman. Where are we on that getting up?
I was promised that we would have that report by the end of the month. Obviously, we don't have it yet, Tanya. I guess you just spoke to him yesterday?
Yes, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that. I did speak with him. Uh, they're working, of course, the Fifth Third Bank, uh, in, uh, the, the issues there and getting, getting the information, but, uh, he promised to have something to us by the end of the month, so we will, we can certainly discuss that as soon as we have a report issued and we can talk through it at the next board meeting.
Yeah, I'd like to see that put to bed.
Absolutely.
I have one thing I'd like to bring up, and that's, uh, the restrooms on the golf course. I'm assuming that Mike got and took everybody out to see the, what, where we proposed it and so on and so forth, so I'd like to, if I could, uh, bring it up for a vote and to get that started. Um, and do, do I just make a motion, or do, do I have to do something different than that? I, I, what I'd like is the, I think it's proposal B without the concession, or you tell me how to do this.
Was that tabled at the last meeting?
It was a discussion, I think.
It was a discussion?
No, it was just a discussion.
Yeah, well, to bring it, so we can bring it as a resolution at the next board meeting? Is that, or...
Well, you can, and whatever the board wants to do. I mean, it's a design...
I guess if you're wanting to make, if you're wanting to make a motion to pick a, which, which proposal A or B?
A was...
With the concession.
Which one?
Without.
Without, okay.
Okay, B was with.
Okay.
Uh, A would still have the ice and water machine, I believe.
No, A, A has...
Is it, are we reversed?
You reversed.
I'm sorry.
A has the concession.
Okay.
Well, then, can I just make a motion?
Yeah, if you want to make a motion as to which one you want us to bring back a resolution, I don't have, I don't have a problem with that. Yeah.
B one, B two, right?
If we want to pick, I mean, we can prepare...
We can prepare the resolution. If you guys want to vote on which, it's either A or B today, I don't have a problem with that, but my recommendation is going to be bring it back as a resolution at the next board meeting.
Okay.
See, I think the question is, what's, what's the process? We're delaying now two weeks to get to the next meeting. Um, once we pass the resolution, then do we have to put it out to bid?
Yes, yes.
And, and the question is, if we, if we put forward a motion today to approve sending it out to bid?
Which is it?
Can you bring back a resolution so that we're, we're not delaying, or do we need to have that resolution before you can put it out to bid?
Okay.
We, we need to, we need to pick which building we're doing so we can give it to our design team to, to get the construction drawings done, um, because of course, we didn't start them on anything until we, y'all pick one, um, if y'all want to...
I make a motion that we approve option B two?
Which is the ice machine, but not the concession.
Right, which is the ice machine and...
I'll second that.
There were two, B one...
Yeah, there's B one and B two.
B two is similar to what we have now on the golf course.
Yeah, correct.
B one is a little bit different, but I think it is.
Just to confirm, so that, um, is for the proposal B two without a vending machine, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Correct.
So the size of the building will be decreased by, are we talking about five feet?
Six feet.
Six feet?
No.
So what's the total length?
Eighteen.
Without a vending area? Do you remember?
Eighteen six.
Eighteen, eighteen feet three.
Eighteen feet?
Eighteen six.
Eighteen point three.
Yeah.
Eighteen point three, okay.
Yeah. And just to make sure I'm understanding Drew correctly, what, if we, what if this passes today, then we can get the process started on getting construction drawings done and then get the bid, get it put out for bid, and then we can come back with a proposal to, with, after the bid?
Correct.
Any more discussion? Any public comment?
My name's Gary Rollinson. I'm a resident. Just to clarify here, we're talking about the bathroom that we discussed at the last meeting before nine and 10?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
The subject, the bathroom came up. I didn't know the location.
Okay.
Can we see what we're approving? I didn't bring mine with me.
I can send that with you since you have, email it to you since you already have it.
Okay, I know that we have some options to, to go over, and we didn't, didn't really have any public comment based on those options, I don't believe.
Well, the, the only, there were two options.
Then again, I'm just going by recollection of last meeting, and I have no clue what two B looks like or whatever.
Very similar to the bathrooms we have on the course now.
Yeah, I saw, saw the different locations of the doors and alongside we had.
Yeah, I'll just email it to you with your other public request. That way you can actually have it.
Any additional public comment? Chrissy?
Supervisor Hoteling?
Yes.
Supervisor Stiegel?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
President Branson?
Yes. Any additional discussion to and from the board? Meeting adjourned.